Oh, well.
No bleachers tonight.
No, I know. Why are we in here instead of in the gym? I expected to be in the gym.
He doesn't see there's many people here.
Huh?
He just doesn't see there's many.
No, I guess they're expecting a smaller crowd. They are more comfortable in the bleachers. A full committee? Small group, sixteen people for the tournament. Yeah, you too, right? Small group for the tournament.
Do you want to take, do you want to make a seat?
I'm gonna get back from Paris, we'll go, okay?
We can sit next to Mike, yeah.
Now move in, young fellow.
How are ya?
How are you doing? Yeah, no, you stay here, I'll move in.
Oh, I don't want that.
You here alone?
Yeah.
The police station.
It's gonna add about forty dollars.
Front arms, too.
Technology, yeah. About fifty years ago when it started, it was called the system. Now it's gonna be like some more. Like I say, we went through this. And then we worked on it. We would have support calls, but it didn't.
I would be, I'd be going on the bottles and...
You were a boss to yourself.
And then, my major job is I did golf. And from someone who hates, loves, tries to try it. Where all I did was, I was trying to show. So, you know, with, with travel, people always say, "Wait." I thought it was, I thought it was, I thought it was, like, I'm watching, I'm getting an employee. No. High school. Nice shot. I haven't used it. It's always got pretty wide. Six years. So then when you were found, you never got it.
Good evening. My name is Dominic Madiotto and I'm a senior here at Mashpee Middle High School, where I'm a member of the varsity football, basketball, and lacrosse teams. Ever since becoming a member here in the athletic program, I've developed many important life skills that I will carry with me throughout my life, such as teamwork, resilience, discipline, and leadership. Today, I would like to share how building these skills through athletics have shaped me into the person I am today. Throughout my time here, I've had the opportunity to be part of numerous teams from middle school level up to the varsity level, and the number one thing every coach I've had that stressed to us as players was teamwork. No team can function if there's no trust or communication among everyone. I've learned to communicate better, solve problems faster, and how to bring my skills set to the table to help my team. This is something I will use in college, my future career, and for the rest of my life. Overcoming difficulties has made me resilient. I've had my fair share of injuries throughout my time participating in athletics here, but each time I focus on what was ahead rather than the bad. This mindset has helped me push through hard times, such as two broken fingers and a broken elbow, that sidelined me for numerous seasons and games. Having gone through these hard times, I've learned how to bounce back from tough times, overcome challenges, and how to keep moving forward. Developing discipline has played a huge role in my journey as well. Staying committed to early workouts, late practices, and pushing through the days I didn't want to keep going were challenges of mine, but it's helped me improve and achieve my goals as a student athlete. Building these skills have helped me become a better student, as I've been able to manage playing three sports while taking all honor roll or honor classes and maintaining a high honor roll. Leadership is another skill I've developed over the years as I've grown older and matured. I've learned through taking on the responsibility of leading that you have to be able to listen to others, be open to feedback, and promote teamwork. As a senior captain, I helped lead the varsity football team to a state championship appearance and basketball to a senior night win, and at the moment in the lacrosse season, I've helped lead to the most wins in a season in the past three seasons. To reflect on my journey here at Mashpee as a student athlete, it's been nothing short of incredible as well as rewarding. I've learned to work with others in stressful situations, to stay committed in my training and academics to prepare for college and my future career, and to push myself through injury and rehab to be able to play again. Finally, I've learned to embrace being a leader and supporting my teammates and myself through challenges, setbacks, and victories that we face together. In the end, the personal development that I've experienced may not have been possible without the opportunity to be part of the school's athletic programs. I would like to thank my family, the coaches, my teammates, the Mashpee Athletic Department, and everyone who has supported me along the way and helping me become the person I am today. Thank you for your time, and go Falcons!
Nice job. He, by the way, plans to attend the School of Marine and Environmental Affairs at the University of New England in Biddeford, Maine come this fall. And of course, while he's there, play football and lacrosse, if not more. Dominic, thank you for your insights, and best wishes for continued success in your life and the lives of others. Parenthetically, if my son Nathaniel were here tonight, he'd be embarrassed to tears, but I have to confess that he's a 2020 graduate of Mashpee High School and was on Coach Treverey's championship football teams on three occasions during his tenure here. So, way to go Nathaniel. About a week or so from now, several familiar faces that we've all come to know and admire over the years, if not the decades, will embark on the next chapter in their lives. It's surely bittersweet for them and for us. It's my pleasure now to call upon Mashpee Town Manager Rodney Collins to tell you more. I'd like to call upon Chair Carol Sherman, Select Board Member Tom O'Hara, and Town Clerk In deep appreciation for their dedication and their contributions to the town and for collectively trying to make a Mashpee better place. Thank you for a grateful community, for all of your service, and for all that you have done. And this is for Carol. If I can get the next one out. This is for Tom.
Oh, thank you.
And this is for Deborah Kay. All right, you three, don't go too far. We're not done yet. You put in all these years, you're gonna have to just suffer through it for another couple of minutes here. As if that were not enough, I'm pleased now to welcome to the stage our State Representative David Viera and our State Senator Dylan Fernandez.
It's great to be with you this evening. I know you have a full slate ahead of you, but we just wanted to take a moment to recognize these leaders in the community for their incredible public service to make Mashpee a more vibrant place to live and their dedicated service and commitment to the town. These are often thankless, and in many cases, almost like a volunteer position, but you guys put in the work, and we just wanted to recognize that with citations from the Senate honoring all three members here who are, I know, moving on but not going far, and I'm sure will always remain committed to the town of Mashpee. And I'm joined here by David Viera, who has some House citations as well.
Thanks, Dylan. You know, in Falmouth, I've had the honor of being the town moderator for 26 years, and I always say government at the highest level is government at the local level. And you see that in your warrant tonight, the things that you all as registered voters and members of this open town meeting are gonna do. But to be able to provide that leadership, since I've been in the legislature, I've worked with Carol and I've worked with Tom on the board. Deb and I go way back, even before I was in the legislature, working on various projects. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the community, and I know we'll see you in those seats in the next town meeting, so congratulations and keep up the good work. Deb says no.
Happy retirement. Yeah, David and I belong to the same moderator fraternity, 26 years, huh? If I'm re-elected next Saturday, that will start my fourth year. There's no way I'm gonna match your record, as much as I'd like to. Thank you very much. Thirteen thousand two. That's the number of weeks that have elapsed since gunfire in Concord and Lexington, Massachusetts, triggered the start of the American Revolutionary War. It was April 19th, 1775. About 14 months later, the Declaration of Independence was signed. Next year, on July 4th, the United States of America will be 250 years old. Mashpee, too, has an impressive history, as we all know and respect, that extends way before England had the slightest interest or awareness of what was across the pond. As a legal entity, the town of Mashpee was incorporated in 1870, 155 years ago, which is when Mashpee conducted its first town meeting. Most of us weren't around for that, and tonight, we do it again. So, welcome again to this robust and enviable American and New England tradition. Now, a few housekeeping matters. If you are a Mashpee voter, you have in your possession a blue and white clicker device, and by now, most of you know about it and how it works. How many here are first timers with the clicker? A few. Well, we're gonna have a trial run, so you can practice. So, as you can see, there are two options, yes and no. When I call for a vote by saying "vote now," you'll have 30 seconds to press one button or the other, or neither, if you choose to abstain. And during that time period, you can change your vote. Just keep in mind that the last button you press before the time runs out is the one that gets tallied. You'll see the vote tallies increment on the TV monitors behind me and the totals and whether or not the vote has passed, including whether it's a marginal question with a nine-tenths or two-thirds vote. Does anyone have any questions? All right, seeing none, how about a practice round? Actually, this is in the form of a survey, trying to be efficient here. So, in the future, the question is, do you prefer to continue having town meeting here in this auditorium? A yes vote means you do, a no response means that you prefer to go back to the gym. Ready? This is water, in case you were wondering. Well, I guess we'll stay here in the auditorium. Thank you very much for your vote. So, you see how it works. The motion, or some facsimile thereof, if it's a lengthy motion, will also appear, as you just saw here on the screen. Now, if you wish to speak on a motion at tonight's meeting, please move to one of the three microphones, one there, one in the middle, one over there, and wait for me to recognize you. Give your name and street where you live. I'll recognize you if you are displaying or wearing around your neck this clicker, which indicates that you're a registered voter and allowed to vote as well as speak. Non-voters, who may be here, who are property owners in Mashpee, are also welcome to speak if you like, in which case, to be recognized, you should have an index card that was provided when you checked in that testifies to your property ownership, but that you're also not a voter. Now, did you know that Mashpee also has a deputy moderator? Just in case, you know, I collapse, quit, leave the building, anything could happen, we have a backup. So, I want to acknowledge and thank Ed Gilde for being available at each meeting in case I need assistance or if something unusual happens. Ed, where are you?
Right here.
Right down here. Give him a hand. He does not get a lot of recognition nor compensation. Thanks also to Chris Ball and his talented crew from Mashpee TV, and of course, to the staff and police officers for meeting our needs and keeping us safe, keeping us safe once again. Speaking of, yeah. Speaking of school staff, I did not know this until today, but this is Mashpee School Teacher Appreciation Week. So, another opportunity for some applause to thank those teachers that help us all. I'm almost done. When you leave tonight, leave through the door that you came in and exit the building, and be sure to turn in your clicker. We know which clicker belongs to whom, so if you inadvertently walk off with it, the clicker police will be knocking at your door within 10 days. Finally, I call your attention to the partial listing of town meeting rules that appear in the back of your blue books, if you have them. Those are important, and sometimes I need to remind folks about them. Questions and respectful discussions are encouraged. Brevity is a virtue. Therefore, we encourage adhering to the four Cs: be concise, be civil, be constructive, and most of all, be courteous. All right, are we ready? Finance Committee here, Select Board here, Town Council. Two Town Council. We must really be important. I call upon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 5th of May, 2025, at 7:00 PM, to act upon articles in the following special town meeting warrant. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to dispense with the reading of the special town meeting warrant articles.
Been a motion made and a second. Is there any discussion? I would expect not. Sometimes, we don't have to use the tally system and give up 30 seconds to wait for the vote to tally. If it's likely that the vote on a majority basis would be pretty obvious, I'll just call for a voice vote like we used to do. So, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Article number one, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article One as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Is there any discussion on Article One? This is to pay a prior year's bills that are outstanding and therefore requires a It would appear that the ayes have it, with 261 yes votes. Thank you. Article number two, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Town Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Second.
Any discussion on Article Two? Hearing none, let's try the clickers again. If you are ready to vote on Number Two, let's do so, and vote now. The vote passes by majority, 221 to 15. Town Clerk Debbie Kay tells us that we have 284 registered voters with us tonight. Article number three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second. I should be inquiring along the way here whether the Finance Committee has a recommendation, as they almost always do. So, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of seven to zero.
It's been six months since I've done this, so my apologies. All right, we'll use your clickers again. Motion carries by a majority of the voters, 228 to eight. Article Number Four, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve the Article Number Four as printed, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto."
Do we have a second?
He's not finished.
Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Otway.
I move the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto," provided further that such appropriation shall be funded from the FY 2025 Community Preservation budgeted for Appropriation Reserve.
Second.
All right, let's do this. Since I did not hear a second of the original motion, we will consider that that motion was never made. Therefore, the motion that you just heard from Mr. Cotton is the motion that's on the floor with a second. Is there any recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Four? Article Number Four carries by majority vote, 209 to seven. In the first period, the Celtics are leading 21 to 20. I'll keep you posted. Moving on to Article Number Five, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto," and provide further that the funds appropriated hereunder shall not be paid over as a grant to the association to preserve Cape Cod, APCC, until APCC has received all other grant funds necessary for the project. The Selectment approves this Article Five by five to zero.
Second. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. I've not formally given the Select Board an opportunity to present you with their recommendations. Oh, you just heard it on this one, so feel free to add that as you just did in the future. Any discussion on Article Five? Article Five passes by a vote of 230 to 16. Thank you. Article Number Six, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Six? The article passes by a vote of 223 to 13. Thank you. Article Number Seven, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto." The Select Board approves Article Seven by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Seven? Not in a very talkative mood tonight.
Mr. Otway, there is a hand.
Oh, there is, I'm sorry. If you could come to a microphone.
It's so difficult to have. It says, "Redneck Road South," and it says, "Redneck Road North."
Do you wish to amend the article? I'll take that as a no. Any other discussion on this article?
Make a motion to strike the word "south" and replace it with the word "north" in the article.
All right. On the motion to amend, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Back to the main motion. Any further discussion? All right. On Article Number Seven, vote now. Occasionally, we present some entertaining graphics. And during these 30-second intervals, if anybody has a short poem or wants to sing, just speak up. You may or may not be recognized.
Sorry, we're calling the amendment. The vote is still open. If you could just ask people to...
All right. Don't know if you could hear that. The system that we use to tally these votes is dependent upon some advanced planning, and when things happen spontaneously, some adjustment is made. There's no monkey business going on here, but the vote is still open, as you may have heard him say. So, if you've not yet voted on Article Seven, you still have time to do so now. Right?
If you've already voted, just click your vote again.
All right, further clarification. Whether or not you have already voted on this article, do so again. The system records those that have already acted. And by the way, when I say "record," that doesn't mean that there's a cloud account somewhere that associates your name with your vote. There is no record kept of any of this. It's just what you see tonight. And the article passes, 251 to 21. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry for the confusion. Article Number Eight, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article eight by a vote of five to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Let's try a voice vote on this article. If there's no discussion, is there any discussion? All those in favor of Article eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it unanimously. Article number nine, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article nine as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "Or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article nine by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article nine? Let's try for a voice vote again. All those in favor of Article nine, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article number ten, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article ten as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "Or take any other action relating thereto." The selectmen approves the Article ten by five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article ten by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article ten? Well, since we're on a roll with voice votes, let's try it again. All those in favor of Article ten, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously.
No, it didn't.
There were a couple nays.
There was only one nay.
This is one of these delicate areas that the moderator has some discretion on. If the nays were overwhelmingly obvious, then it might be a different ending. But thank you for your participation. Moving on to Article number eleven, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer upon the approval of the Select Board to borrow the sum of $2,500,000 pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection seven, or eight, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and to appropriate said sum for the purposes of paying the cost of design and engineering of a Mashpee-Wakeby Cluster Wastewater Treatment Facility, including all other costs incidental and related thereto as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, and further to authorize the Select Board or other appropriate town officials to execute documents and take such other actions as may be needed to effectuate this vote, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article eleven by a four to zero vote, and second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article eleven by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article eleven?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Rosado. I live in Cranberry Ave., which is in the far northwest corner of town over behind John's Pond. And I'm pleased to be able to vote and recommend to others that they vote for this motion. But I have a concern. Initially, when the planning was talked about in general about septic treatments, we thought we'd be able to buy in to the base and have a source for our side of town. The base unfortunately sold that to a private nonprofit. It's not available to us in general anymore. And just last week, the state itself said that Towner Sandwich, just probably like Mashpee, will not be able to receive state funds to use that facility for future septic treatment, which will make it even more expensive, I guess, to serve our side of town. And I hope people remember that we came to these meetings, even though we weren't getting immediate septic benefits. And in the future, when our side of town has that need, those other people step up and vote like I am tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We will definitely use the clickers for this one. Being a borrowing question does require a two-thirds vote. So without further ado, vote now. All right, congratulations. The vote passes. Two twenty-seven to forty-eight. Article number twelve, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twelve as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "Or take any other action relating thereto." The Select Board recommends the approval of Article twelve by a vote of four to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twelve by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article twelve? Seeing none? Let's try a voice vote again on this one. All those in favor of Article twelve, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. I would now be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Some moved?
Second.
Second? Discussion? Didn't think so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The special town meeting is adjourned. Let's take thirty seconds. If you want to stand up and stretch, during which time I will not sing nor dance. All right, thirty seconds goes quickly when we're having fun, doesn't it? Thirty-one to thirty-one, nine thirty-two of the second period. I now call upon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the fifth day of May, 2025, at 7:00 PM or so, to act upon articles in the following town meeting warrant. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carries unanimously. Article number one, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article one as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "Or take any other action relating thereto." The Select Board recommends approval of Article one by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article one by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Any discussion? On Article one? We'll do a voice vote, or try that. All those in favor of Article one say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, passes unanimously. Now, Article number two? Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation, in line items two and twenty-two of the omnibus budget. And further, the town defray the expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation of those amounts shown under the columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation. And that to fund said appropriation, the town raise and appropriate $72,552,288 and transfer from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account $450,000 to line item forty, $50,000 to line item forty-one, wastewater infrastructure investment fund $987,000 to line item seventy-one, wastewater stabilization fund $295,664 to line item seventy-one, and $56,354 to line item seventy-three. Shellfish receipts reserved for appropriation account, $30,000 to line item thirty-two. Waterways improvement fund, $32,000 to line item thirty-one. Cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account, $7,250 to line item fifty-three. Street betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $385,000 to line item seventy, $69,950 to line item seventy-two, and $10,000 to line item seventy-four. Septic betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $808,500 to line item seventy, $24,480 to line item fifty-five, and Community Preservation Act fund balance, $225,000 to line item seventy, and $2,250 to line item seventy-two, and revenue available for appropriation, $2,100,000 to line item seventy-eight.
Second.
The Select Board recommends approval of Article two by a vote of five to zero.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article two by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. I had meant to preface that article with a few explanatory comments, unless your eyes glaze over with all those numbers that you heard. But I opted not to, since the article was not on the floor yet, and therefore, discussion had not started, which I'm going to start now. So just to simplify it, the budget that you see on the pages that you're looking at, on the far right-hand column at the bottom, totals $77,285,736. Everybody see that? The motion that was just made totals that number. So that's what you would be voting on. Seventy-two million and some change of that total number is money to be raised through taxes. And all of the other numbers that were mentioned as transfers are coming in to fund this budget from other existing accounts that are already funded. So I hope that's helpful. In other words, you're voting on the total number as seen here. What you don't have in front of you is the actual wording of the motion and where each of the partial increments of those funding sources are identified. Everyone happy with that explanation?
Yes.
At least up here? Is that helpful to you folks?
Yes.
Meanwhile, we go on. So any other discussion? Now, what we customarily do on this budget article is give everyone an opportunity to zero in on their pet topic. And I mean that respectfully. So if you... Whatever document you're looking at, you'll see that all the line items in this budget are numbered in the second column. So I'm going to go through it more or less page at a time, give you a range of numbers. And then if anybody wants to have a comment or a question on a particular line item, just shout out the word "hold", and we will come back and address that. I'm going by line numbers, not page numbers, because depending on the document that you have, the page numbers might be somewhat different. Makes sense? All right. So to start, let's start with lines number one through sixteen. If anyone wants to know more about lines one through sixteen or any one of those lines, please say "hold." Seeing no hands or hold messages? Let's move on to lines seventeen through thirty-five. Let's move on to lines thirty-six through fifty-two. Which line? You said thirty? Well, hang on a moment. Let's see if there's any other holds. When you do have a question, you're going to have to come to the microphone. But in the meantime, let's see if there are any other lines that somebody wants to put on "hold." We're now looking at lines thirty-six through fifty-two. Lines fifty-three through sixty-nine. Lines seventy through eighty-one. Okay. So the only item on "hold" is line thirty. And if whoever said "hold" would like to come to a microphone, this is your time. You have to come to the microphone. If you're not able, the microphone will come to you in this case.
Thank you, sorry, and thank you again. Name, Laurie LeBrecq, Four Chadwick Court. My simple question is, why is there a decrease in that particular item from this year to next year? Is that information available?
I can explain that, Mr. Moderator. Yes, it is available. Mr. Collins.
The simple answer is a position was reclassified. It was not eliminated. The services are just being performed by the same person in a different department. So where you saw a decrease there, you're going to see an increase in wastewater management. That's the short answer.
Anything else on line thirty? Or any other line, if you've thought about it more? Yes, sir.
Dennis Balsarini. I'm wondering, this budget, that has nothing to do with the sewer? When we're going to get the bill for the sewer? Or is that part of this budget?
Well, this is the town operating budget. But for clarification, we'll call on Mr. Collins.
I'm going to defer... I think I know where you're leading, Dennis. And I'm going to defer to the Finance Director to give you a little bit more specificity or the wastewater management superintendent. But I think the Finance Director can give you the answer that you're looking for.
Thank you. Dawn Thayer.
So this... You're seeing here, the operating budget does not include the wastewater. You'll see the wastewater is a future article, which is done through an enterprise fund. And all of the wastewater costs for the operations is in that enterprise fund.
All right, thank you all. Any further discussion on Article two? Get your clickers out. Okay, regarding... Okay, regarding Article Two, vote now. Article Two requires a simple majority and it passes two fifty-five to nineteen. Thank you very much. Article Number Three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of seven million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars as follows. Four million, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund, one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from the ambulance reserved receipts in appropriation account, one hundred and six thousand dollars from the Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology Account, and one million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars from the revenue available for appropriation to various department capital accounts for the purposes and in the amounts of specified in the chart accompanying this article.
The Select Board recommends Article Three, five to zero, and second.
Uh, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of seven to zero.
By way of discussion, this has some similarities to the previous article, uh, with those, uh, individual amounts that were mentioned in the motion being transferred. Uh, there is no, uh, raise, uh, component to this. These are all transferred funds totaling seven million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. Any further discussion? Uh, seeing none, we'll use the clickers again. We're gonna use the clicker for the rest of the, uh, meeting, by the way. Um, on all, on all articles. On Article Number Three, vote now. That article carries by majority vote two twenty-six to seventeen. Thank you very much. Article Number Four, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto". The Select Board recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of four to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of seven to zero.
I see Mr. O'Hara has used Howie Carr as the voice changer. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, sounds like a refund to me. Any discussion on Article Four? Got your clickers out still? Uh, on Article Four, vote now. Article Four carries by majority vote two sixty-two to eleven. Thank you very much. Forty-six to thirty-eight. Second period. Article Number Five, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the Treasurer, upon the approval of the Select Board, to borrow the sum thirty-seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection seven or eight, or any other enabling authority in issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and to appropriate the said sum for purposes of paying the cost of construction of a new police station located at nineteen Frank E. Hicks Drive, Mashpee, Mass., including cost of demolition and removal of any structures or features thereon, site preparation, and all other cost incidentals and related thereto, as re-recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, and further to authorize the Select Board or other appropriate town officials to execute documents and take such other action as may be needed to officiate this vote, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly subject and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder.
The Select Board recommends approval of this article, four to zero. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. To, uh, begin the discussion on this, I'm going to call upon Mashpee Chief of Police Scott Carline, who is probably closer to the topic than any of us in this room. Chief?
Good evening. I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance this evening in what I feel could have an everlasting impact on the town of Mashpee. We come before you seeking a new police facility. I know and respect the financial impact of a project of this magnitude, and I appreciate the community researching all aspects of this proposal. It has been our intention not to sell this to the public, but to educate the public on our current working conditions and let you decide for yourselves if we need a new police station. Over the last several months, we've opened our doors to the public. We've provided multiple tours of our facility and also had a very well-attended open house to assist in educating the public on our current conditions. I can stand before you today and tell you that everyone that I spoke with who has taken the tour of our facility has wholeheartedly endorsed a new police station. Most were shocked and a few were outraged that we were working under our current conditions, and I want to thank all of those that came to our facility to see them, to see for themselves. So what did they see on this tour? An HVAC system that needs a complete replacement. Major ventilation issues to include possible mold and mildew. Broken pipes flooding in the basement. Rodent infestation to include rice, mice, and rats. Air quality issue, air quality issues and a foul sewer smell throughout the building. Employees with health concerns over being exposed to this building for long periods of time. A cell block area that fails state inspections every year with faulty doors and suicide prevention issues. These are just some of the issues, but the one that really changed me, things for me, and a picture I'd like to paint for you, is occurred last July third. It was the day before our busiest week, busiest, uh, day of the week. Uh, we had officers working sixteen-hour shifts with additional routine patrols, AT, ATV patrols, and beach patrols. It was on that day, of all days, we had a major sewage break with flood, with raw sewage coming up through our basement, flooding our basement and the downstairs facility. Officers' boots, bags, uniforms, and equipment were all ruined. We ended up going through the Fourth of July week with no running water in the entire building and all restroom facilities shut down. Unfortunately, we operate twenty-four-seven and the show had to go on. The employees maintained their professionalism and worked through this difficult week. Consistent with this time of year, officers and detectives were working several sensitive and difficult investigations. During these investigations, if a victim of any of these crimes needed to use our restroom facilities, they were let outside into a back parking lot where we had to, we had to set up temporary restrooms for the parties. The immediate thought that came to my mind at this time was embarrassment. I was embarrassed of this facility and embarrassed that my officers had to work out of this facility. As a police chief who demands professionalism, this was as unprofessional as I have ever seen. Facility issues continued to escalate right up until just two weeks ago. We, we had the fire department respond, respond to our building on three occasions, with high levels of carbon monoxide readings as a result of a broken boiler system, uh, leaving some employees on edge throughout the building. Working under these conditions can take a toll on officer morale, retention, and recruitment. Working under these conditions, our police agency was still able to perform exceptional work over the last several years. Some of our accomplishments over the, the last several years include being the first to have a body-morn camera program on Cape Cod. We were the third department on Cape Cod to become fully accredited through the Mass Commission on Police Accreditation. And we were also presented with the New England Association of Chiefs of Police prestigious community policing award, taking first place in all of New England in a department with a population between fifteen and thirty thousand people. Our facility may have quit on us, but our employees did not. The men and women of the Mashpee Police Department deserve the credit for these accomplishments because they are the ones that put in the hard work. This is not something I did, this is something they did and would not have been accomplished without their dedication, commitment, and professionalism. A new facility which would acquit us for the next forty to fifty years would greatly assist in morale, recruitment, and retention, making the Mashpee Police Department and agency others would want to come to rather than one our employees and prospective employees would want to go to. This is for them. The officers that work twenty-four-seven, nights, weekends, holidays, missing Christmas and Thanksgiving with their families and protecting their community, so we can all enjoy ours. These office will play, these officers will place their lives on the line for any citizen because that is their calling. Those that will answer that calling deserve to be supported by the community and by the public. They respond to fatal car accidents, violent disturbances, and unattended deaths. Dealing with our citizens when some are having the worst days of their lives. They are the ones that knock on a door late at night, observe a light come on, and see the pained expression on the face of a parent or a loved one as the panic sets in knowing they are there to deliver tragic news. Their work is important and oftentimes they amaze me in how successful they are in dealing with everything that is thrown their way. This facility is for them. Allowing them to reach their full professional potential with state-of-the-art training features and updated technology. This evening, the community of Mashpee has an opportunity to bring the Mashpee Police Department to its highest professional levels by approving a new facility that not only we can be proud of, but the community can be proud of as well. To quote Sir Robert Peel, considered the founder of modern policing, quote, "The police are the public and the public are the police." I highly encourage you to vote yes on Article Five and show the men and women of the Mashpee Police Department a heartfelt, a heartfelt display of public support that I feel they desperately deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I just tried to steal my cellphone. Won't, won't have any Celtics results without that. Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, any further discussion on this article? Or questions? Mr. Milbury.
Um, if you haven't seen the media reports about the, the station, if you weren't able to come to the special meeting, and a lot of you didn't, uh, or you weren't able to take the tour, uh, you're missing out. I mean, it, it's just dramatic when you walk into this facility. Um, we asked these guys to risk their lives in the field, and now we ask them to risk their health when they walk into the police station. It's just not right. It's, it's a disgusting place, it's filthy, it needs to be replaced, and it's embarrassment, not just to the people who work there, but to the citizens of the town of Mashpee. Yeah, it's gonna cost you some tax dollars. But what it will purchase is their safety and their gratitude. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
My name's Gwen Grealish. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-two. I remember this police department being built and the fire station across from it. We were very proud of our little town having such a beautiful facility for our officers. I'm curious to know, who was in charge of maintaining this building over the last twenty-five years?
Who might have an answer to that question?
I can say the Department of Public Works is responsible for maintaining it, but before the assumption is that it wasn't properly maintained. I would just simply say, a lot of these things have occurred over the course of an extended period of time. Um, and obviously, the conditions have gotten to the point where, as the chief professionally articulated, they are embarrassing, and I agree. However, in terms of the maintenance, it, it's almost like repairing a stove or a refrigerator over and over and over, and then finally, you decide, you know what, it's time to replace it. We've reached that point. It could be argued that maybe it should have been before now. Um, but the fact of the matter is, um, DPW has not failed to maintain it properly. There are just certain things that are not functional uh, in terms of the floor plan. There are certain, like, for instance, you have to go from the detective's office through the cell block area uh, to go over to the break room. That's not DPW's fault. Um, they maintained the building to the best of their ability. They did not install the cell block area or the holding cell area at the time that the building was constructed. Back in the seventies, um, it was a lot different than it is today, both in terms of technology and both in terms of the architectural design. Uh, we certainly want to have something, uh, that you folks can be proud of, that the, that the officers are comfortable with. Um, but I'm not going to, um, submit that there's been any neglect in terms of maintenance.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I have worked for a builder in Osterville for the last ten years. I've also owned the home that I'm in since my father passed away. I maintain my home. It's been standing there since nineteen sixty-eight. I've also lived in Germany, where buildings there survive five hundred years because people maintain them. I have absolutely no problem with voting for passing this. I think a police department deserves to have an appropriate place to live. And it's not the floor plan I have the problem with. But to spend this kind of money in this economy, when many of us are living paycheck to paycheck, to not promise us that this building will be properly maintained for these men who risk their, and women, sorry, who risk their lives occasionally for us, who gave me a reason to come back to Mashpee after sixteen years being married to a man in the service, to raise my children in the safest town I've ever been in. I feel like we deserve some kind of assurances that this money is not gonna be asked of us again in another twenty-five years.
I think I heard from somebody over here in the back. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Tom Bain from Swain Circle. Um, kind of following up on that, um, five years ago, the town of Sandwich built a new police, uh, public safety facility that included a fire substation for about half of what we're being asked to appropriate for the new police station. I, too, am a hundred percent in favor of, of our, of our officers, our public safety officers, having the best place to work in, to support our, our community. I'm just interested in if anyone has, uh, explanation of why the cost is so high, about five years after Sandwich built a similar facility.
Is there an answer to that question?
The short answer, and I would be more than happy to defer my answer to another who can elaborate, but the short answer is, the supply chain has changed. The, uh, inflation, uh, factor has changed. We don't know what's going to happen in terms of tariffs. And there are a lot of other issues that were built in or factored into the figure that is before you, but I don't know if you want to elaborate on that. And I know she's not a resident, so I would have to defer to the moderator.
You can come up here. And if you could just introduce yourself and what your area of expertise is on this topic.
Good evening. I'm Amanda Sawyer. I am with CHA Consulting. I am the owner's project manager for this project. I've worked on multiple buildings, including public safety facilities over the last decade. One thing that we did to really understand, you know, specifically your question, looking back over the last five to ten years and looking at public safety facilities to make sure that the pricing that we've received, the cost estimates that we've received for this particular project is in line with those projects. You know, Sandwich, for instance, we did an escalation looking at projects that were bid out and built before COVID and then escalating those costs to see if they aligned with this project, and they did. And Sandwich was one of them. There was also multiple projects that we looked at. We discussed those in the public forum about a month ago, so that information is readily available, I believe, on the website.
Thank you. Thank you both. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Lytton. I toured the police station last weekend, or two weekends ago, and I have to say it was horrifying, absolutely horrifying. I was ashamed and embarrassed that our police force had to work in such conditions. It's worse than Alcatraz. No, no offense, but really, the flooding, the cell toilets back up. If one gets backed up, all of them get backed up. There's no heat in the winter in one section. They have to put room air conditioners in during the summer because the HVAC system is completely blown. I do wonder if the DPW is partially responsible for the decay of the police station. And I'll tell you why. One of the things that I learned was a lot of the old equipment, old papers, old file cabinets, is still down in the basement. You know why? Because they can't be disposed of at the dump without the DPW charging the police department to do so. That doesn't seem right to me. Also, flooding problems in the basement. To my knowledge, I'm not an expert, but I didn't see any kind of weatherproofing to the cement down in the basement. I didn't notice any French drains. I'm not an expert. I wouldn't want my worst enemy to have to work in those conditions. I do have questions about the thirty-seven million dollar price tag. But to expect people that are out there every day risking their lives for us to work is such a crappy, excuse my French, but hellhole, is awful. We need a new police station. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me just remind everybody that the scope of this article tonight is to discuss the building of a new police station, not to visit what led to the point that got us here. Not that it's irrelevant, but I would ask you to keep the conversation focused on the issue at hand, which is whether or not to invest this resource for a police station that I think I speak for everyone would like to believe that it would be more than adequately maintained to prolong its life. Next speaker.
Good evening, citizens. My name is Karen Faulkner, 205 Ashers Path West in Mashpee. I wondered when I saw the price tag of thirty-seven point one million approximately cost to build this police station, how could it be that expensive? So I started doing a little research, and I'm telling you here today, this price is not out of line. If you can follow what I have to tell you, I think you'll understand. Province Town built a new PD last, they took occupancy last year in April. The size of it was, is thirteen thousand nine hundred square feet. Our building is going to be twenty-eight thousand square feet, so it's approximately double, less one hundred square feet. The full-time population in Province Town is three thousand six hundred and thirty-one. Mashpee, five thousand three hundred and twelve, fifteen thousand three hundred and twelve. The summer population in Province Town is fifty thousand approximately. Here, it's thirty-seven thousand. The Province Town PD came in at one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars per square foot. Ours, based on thirty-seven point one million divided by twenty-eight thousand square feet, comes in at one thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars per square foot. So now you say, well, okay, seventeen million for Province Town, thirty, double that because we're doing double square foot, is thirty-four thousand. And let's say three thousand of that to bring it up to thirty-seven is a contingency because it's just what Mr. Collins said, supply chain problems, who knows what. So that's just a safety valve in there. So I'm saying this price is right, it's high, we just don't, we can't even conceive of things being this expensive. But if we don't, as Mr. Cotton said to me the other day, if I may use your name without getting permission, if we don't do it this year, it's going to come right back next year, and it'll be two, three, four million dollars more. And it'll keep coming back, and we cannot allow our people to work in a building that is so sick. Thank you.
I believe, are you, you wish to speak? Yes. Okay, I think you were next in the queue. We'll get to you next.
Hi, everyone. How are you? My name's Gregory Colombo. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I want to say, as, you know, a young individual in the community, I was just privileged to, after three years on Cape Cod, to purchase my first home here in Mashpee. And I will say that there is one thing about the safety and security that the police department provides, the way that they're always on every corner, they're there, they're watching, they're looking out. I mean, that's a big deal. To feel safe in your own home at night, to know that you could fall asleep even with your door open, is huge. And unfortunately, as someone who's unfortunately been around the block, I know what it's like to be in a place that is not inhabitable for our community of people that unfortunately might have to spend time in those situations or those spaces. Now, and then also, for our people that are protecting our nation, I mean, or, excuse me, our city. I mean, that's huge. They deserve the best. They put their lives on the front line every single day. They do the best they can to help and support the community. So to me, I think it's a no-brainer. I'm grateful to be in this community. I'm grateful to be here and joining you all and be a registered voter, and that's all I really have. So thank you.
Thank you. One more speaker, and then we'll call for a vote.
My name is Brett O'Hara. I live at thirty-two Radcliffe in Mashpee. When I toured the police station, I went with my sister, and we fully intended to vote no on this project until we went into the police station and we toured it and we learned all about things. And I think that people are so quick to pass judgment on why the DPW failed or the maintenance, but nobody's mentioned the fact that the original building was built in nineteen seventy-nine, and the addition was put on in the nineties. And the five million dollars that the police had allocated for their HVAC, they put in, opted to put in window units, and then that money was reallocated to the schools. And as such, that happens over and over again. I managed a hundred-unit apartment complex that was built in nineteen eighty-one in Hyannis, and I am at the owner's mercy, year in and year out, and things just wear down, band-aiding them. And I agree with what other people have said. If we don't spend the money now, and it's going to come back in five years, we're going to spend three million or five million to band-aid it today, and in five years, it's still going to be my problem because we're still going to need a new police station, and that police station's going to be fifty million. So our officers deserve to have a new police station.
Thank you. I see two more people standing. I'll ask you, sir, first, if you have anything to add that's not already been addressed.
Somewhat.
If you do, you may have thirty seconds.
Thank you. My name is Robert Nolan, Mr. Moderator. I live at fourteen Chadwood Court. I can begin my comments by stating that I was a police officer for twenty-eight years, and not in this community, but elsewhere. And I would suggest to you, in my, I've been retired for many years, but I would suggest that this police department is probably the most progressive police department on Cape Cod. And I did tour the police station a couple of weeks ago. I had never been in that building. But I can say this, it's antiquated, it's depressing, it's unhealthy. So it doesn't matter how it got that way, it doesn't matter who was responsible of how it got that way. It's dilapidated, it needs to be replaced. We depend on these people, these men and women of the police department, to protect us twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. They are professional, they are terrific, and I believe that this is a facility that they deserve. It has to be state-of-the-art. It's going to be expensive, but it's money well spent, and I urge people to vote for it.
Thank you. I allowed a minute instead of thirty seconds. Yes, sir, for anything new?
Yes, just that my house was built in the nineteen seventies, and if all the issues that are presented-
Could we have your name and street, please?
Rory Paxton, Seventy-Eight Lakewood.
Excuse, thank you.
If all the issues that are affecting the Mashpee Police Station were affecting my house, such as pests and mold in the plumbing, I wouldn't be, I couldn't afford to tear down my house and build a new one. So my recommendation is to look at the plan again and remodel.
All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
I agree. This is a two-thirds requirement because of the borrowing involved. You all know the issue. Get your clickers ready and vote now. The motion carries by a vote of two twenty-nine to fifty. So now, you're partway toward realizing this objective. This article and the two articles that will now follow it all require a yes vote when you go to the ballot box on May tenth, if you've not already voted. I'm not arguing one way or the other, but this vote tonight will have no bearing unless it's also approved for the borrowing at the ballot box on Saturday the tenth. Congratulations. All right, moving on to Article Number Six. Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer upon the approval of the select board to borrow the sum of two hundred thousand pursuant to general law, Chapter Forty-four, subsection seven or eight, or any other enabling authority and issues bonds and notes to of the town therefore, and to appropriate said sum for purposes of paying the cost of a wastewater phase-three recharge evaluation, including all other costs incidental and related thereto as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, and further to authorize the select board or other appropriate town officials to execute documents and take such other actions as may be needed to effectuate this vote, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, subsection twenty-one C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder. The select board recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of four zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing or hearing none, this requires a two-thirds vote as well, and you may vote now. We exceeded the two-thirds majority. The vote was one ninety-seven to thirty-three. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Article Number Seven, Ms. Wyman Colombo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer upon the approval of the select board to borrow the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pursuant to general law, C forty-four, section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority and issues bonds and notes of the town therefore, and to appropriate said sum for the purposes of paying the costs of design, engineering, and permitting of an aluminum sulfate treatment for the Mashpee Wakeby Pond, including all other costs incidental and related thereto as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee, and further to authorize the select board or other appropriate town officials to execute documents and take such other actions as may be needed to effectuate this vote, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, so-called General Law, Section, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Twenty-one C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder. The select board recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of four to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, grab, I see one. Yes, sir.
Hi there, George Schmidt, Santuit Lane. Just a point of information, is the similar treatments going to be planned for the other ponds that are degrading in the town?
I'll see if someone has an answer to that. Could you repeat the question? I'm not sure that I understood it clearly.
We're applying a treatment to one pond. There are several ponds in the town that are degrading. Are there plans to also treat those ponds?
And if someone-
So why or why not?
Where might we find an answer?
I believe they are under consideration.
Also, I think it's important to point out that this specific plan-
Also, I think it's important to point out that this specific plan was based on a multi-year study that was conducted. So I think other ponds would certainly be in the works after there's a study done. But the study was recently completed on Mashpee-Wakeby, and this was a chief recommendation.
Okay. Is there any study recommended for the other ponds in town?
Didn't we just do a short?
I believe we approved Santuit, and then Asshument was also approved, which was a collaborative between Falmouth and Mashpee, and I believe the base kicked in on that one as well. So those three, anyway, any ponds further than that, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
If we have the backup data to support it.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this article? The article is passed.[689.01][689.01](applause) By a vote of two-oh-four to twenty-three. Sixty-seven to fifty-two, Boston. Article number eight, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the updates. I move the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
The selectmen recommend Article Eight, five to nothing. Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Eight? That was in the third period, by the way.[750.13][750.13](pause) And Article Eight passes one-sixty-two to nine. Thank you. Article number nine, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto."
Article Nine was approved by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Second.
Motion made, and seconded, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nine by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Nine? And Article Nine passes one-eighty-eight to ten. Article number ten, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand to provide for road improvement projects in for the town, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter ninety of the Mass. General Laws, and to authorize the treasurer the approval of the select board to borrow said sum of nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars under, in pursuit to the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, section seven and eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes to the town thereof.
The select board voted to approve Article Ten by a vote of four-zero.
Second. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Discussion on Article Ten? And Article Ten passes two-fifteen to nine. Thank you. Article number eleven, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of five-zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Article, any discussion on Article Eleven? Imagine how late we'd be here if these were all hand counts.[1003.32][1003.32](pause) And Article Eleven passes two-oh-one to twelve. Article Twelve, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of seven to zero.
Any Article Twelve discussion? I'm sure we're all here to enjoy somebody's ringtone.[1067.33][1067.33](laughing) Hint, hint.[1070.83][1070.83](pause) And that article passes two-oh-eight to thirteen. Mr. Cotton, Article Thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Thirteen? And Article Thirteen passes two-oh-three to nine. Article Fourteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article, oh, I'm sorry, fourteen. Right, fourteen? Yes.
Fourteen.
I move the town vote to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Fourteen by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fourteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Fourteen? And Article Fourteen passes one-ninety-one to four. Article Fifteen, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article Fifteen by five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fifteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any Article Fifteen discussion? Article Fifteen passes one-ninety-five to eleven. Just a footnote here, customarily, when we use this clicker system, that a lot of time for everyone to vote is twenty seconds. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we made it thirty seconds, because if there were an overflow crowd and there were more people out in the lobby, there's a seven or eight-second delay between what we do in here and what they see or hear out there. Since there are no such folks out there and everybody is contained here, we've adjusted the clock so that now the duration of the open time to vote has been reduced from thirty to twenty seconds, which is what our customary target is. That'll speed things up a little bit. Understood? Okay, didn't think you'd mind. Article number sixteen, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Sixteen by a vote of five-zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Sixteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Sixteen? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Carolyn Gray, Grayhoff Drive. I was unaware of the Kids Club program until about a week ago. So when I saw it on the agenda, I was curious and went to the town website, and according to the Department of Recreation, this program is not operating and was last active, apparently around 2010, 2011. So my question is, is this resurrecting previous program that was lost along the way, or is it something new?
Would anyone have an answer to that question?
Mary Bradberry.
We have such an answer. Yes, wherever it's easier, Mary. Official folks get to use this microphone. Mary Bradberry.
Good evening. Name is Mary Bradberry. I am the Recreation Director and have been so for in excess of eleven years at this point. The Kids Club Preschool and Childcare Center has been in operation full-time continuously since, I believe we're in forty years now of operation. There's been no discontinuance of that. I'm not sure where you saw that information, but it sounds to me like perhaps we need to review the website and make sure that is updated correctly. For that, I apologize. It's been a very successful program. We were able to open as an emergency childcare program to afford accessible, affordable childcare for the town of Mashpee, and during COVID, we got our recognition as an emergency shelter to provide such childcare for the workforce in our community and our greater community. So we're very proud of that program, and it's doing a great job. So thank you all for your support, and I hope that answers your questions. Thank you.[1508.73][1508.73](applause)
Oh, Mary. Any further discussion on Article Sixteen? And Article Sixteen passes two-oh-seven to two. Article Seventeen, zipping right along, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Seventeen by a vote of five-zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seventeen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Seventeen? Article Seventeen passes one-eighty-nine to ten. Article Eighteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Eighteen by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eighteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Eighteen? Article Eighteen passes one-ninety-one to twelve. Article Nineteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Nineteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Nineteen by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nineteen by a vote of six to zero.
And is there any discussion on Article Nineteen? Thanks to one-hundred-and-seventy-three of you, that article passes one-seventy-three to sixteen. Article Twenty, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action relating thereto." The select board recommends approval of Article Twenty by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article Twenty? Seeing none, please vote now. Seeing none, please vote now. Article twenty is passed, one eighty-four to fourteen. Article twenty-one, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-one by a vote of five zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-one by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-one? Seeing or hearing none, please vote now. Article twenty-one passes one seventy-two to fifteen. Article twenty-two, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto, provided that such appropriation shall be funded from revenue available for appropriation. The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-two by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-two by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-two? Seeing none, please vote now. Article twenty-two passes one sixty-six to twenty-seven. And with that series of articles that you just passed, some important staffing issues for the town have been resolved. Congratulations. Article twenty-three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating, any other action related thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-three by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-three by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article twenty-three in the back.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. This is my first town meeting, so forgive me if there are any improprieties or anything.
Welcome.
My name is Quinn Durfee. I live on one seventy-eight Walton Heath Way in New Seaberry. My, I've lived here full-time since middle of the pandemic. My family moved here full-time after I graduated high school. I just came really, I've been trying to get more civically engaged recently as I've found that activism at higher forms of government are generally less effective than local. And one of my biggest issues that I think about a lot is housing. Let me paint you a picture. The, as we just spoke on one of the previous articles, the increasing age of the population of Mashpee and of generally the larger developed world, it's increasing. For example, in Japan, the number of adult diapers sold are, is higher than the number of diapers for children. And this presents a, a, you know, unique problem for economy and for necessary, important, vital services for the community and for its residents. And part of that is, you know, for younger residents to be able to afford to live there. Myself and many of the other people my age, we all, seems like most of us kind of got the understanding that we've been pressed out of where we've grown up and where we would prefer to live. We would love to stay in Massachusetts, but the majority of us are forced to, you know, look into moving to other places like North Carolina, you know, places like those that are cheaper. And one of the biggest things is, you know, the housing crisis, the supply has not matched the demand. And one of the biggest parts of that is zoning. And this article is about zoning and I understand that it is mandated by the state and people are likely to vote yes, but, oh.
Wrong article.
You might want to-
Impropiety, I told you first time. Apologies.
Do you wish to speak to this article or reserve your space for the-
No, I'm so sorry. I'll wait for the next one. I thought it was on twenty-four. I'm so nervous.
So when you do come back for the next one, there's no need to reiterate what you've already said.
Yeah, I'll just continue the speech. Yeah, I'll just continue the grandstanding. Don't worry.
Okay, thank you. We're big on efficiency here. Any other comment on Article twenty-three or discussion? Hearing none, all those that wish to vote, do so now by voting now, please. Thank you. Article twenty-three passes one eighty-seven to seven. Article twenty-four, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. The Select Board recommends approval of Article twenty-four by a vote of four to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends Article twenty-four by a vote of seven to zero.
And does the Planning Board have a recommendation?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wagan, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm pleased to report that the Planning Board held a public hearing regarding this proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw on April thirtieth, 2025, after which the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article by town meeting. I would like to add to that comments if I may.
Is there any discussion? And you may.
So this article is bringing our local zoning in line with a law that was passed by the state, the Affordable Homes Act, which remove, which created the use of accessory dwelling units as a protected use in town. The intent of the state law is to make it easier for us, a town, to create accessory dwelling units. In a, in a summary sheet that was prepared by our town planner, this, the changes to this bylaw eliminates the requirement of owner occupancy. It eliminates the two-bedroom maximum requirement from our zoning bylaw for ADUs. It reduces the parking requirements. And upon recommendation of our building commissioner, it does set a minimum size requirement at a maximum of nine hundred square feet or fifty, fifty percent of the gross floor area, whichever is smaller, and a minimum of four hundred square feet unless the primary dwelling unit is eight hundred square feet or less. So not only as the Chair of the Planning Board, but as a registered voter, I recommend passage of this zoning bylaw amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our newcomer was just so eager to speak on some article in town meeting, so you may continue where you left off. We do appreciate brevity, though, once you've made your point.
I understand, Mr. Moderator. Unfortunately, brevity is not always the solution to some problems.
I'll help you with that.
Yeah, I got you. But so just for the future of the community and for its residents, I would like to, you know, take this moment where we're passing something that is mandated by the state, but we still have to vote on it, to, you know, consider a commitment to, you know, forward thinking with housing and making it more affordable. Just as an example, I checked the zoning and the number of acres. Of the three thousand one hundred and ninety-nine land acres in Mashpee that are zoned for residential use, only four hundred and twenty-three of it is for multifamily residential, so like duplexes and like apartment buildings and stuff. And I totally understand that land is not, we can't create more land, so, but the problem is, is you have to build taller. And so, you know, in the future, looking for opportunities to make housing more available and affordable, you know, because it benefits all of us, so that's really it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Timothy Michael Dorsey of eighty-six Blue Castle Drive. And I just, what's going to happen here is they're going to rescind every single permit and start from scratch with new rules and regulations. Isn't that right? Are you going to charge us, tell us how much?
If you could direct your comments to the audience-
Okay, I think she's going to tell us how much we can charge for rent and when we can rent it, et cetera. Is that true, Ms. Dorsey?
Mr. Dorsey.
Okay, then I apologize for saying that.
Mr. Dorsey, hold on. If you have a comment to make, we welcome it. If you need to interrogate someone, that's not allowed.
I'm not interrogating anybody. She's sitting right next to me, so I thought I'd ask her if I was correct.
That does not matter. We have a whole crowd here that cannot understand the back and forth.
Thank you for straightening me out on that. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess he has no question then. Yes, ma'am, over here.
Hello, my name is Ashley Portal. I live on Horseshoe Bed Way. We purchased our property in 2021. It has a cute little accessory dwelling on it. We were planning to renovate it and we have a big family, so using it for overflow. A few months after we moved in, we actually had somebody knock on our door and ask us if it was available for rent. And we, at the time, we were new homeowners. We hadn't really considered it. So looking at the amendment, I compared it to the original, the current zoning bylaws, and I agree with the changes that are being made to comply with the Affordable Homes Act. I guess I'm just not quite following the language in Section Eight about requiring homeowners to rent the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling at the same time. Based on this language, I know it's in our current bylaws, but if we wanted to rent the accessory dwelling and we live in the primary, it seems like we wouldn't be able to do that. And that's the purpose of the Affordable Homes Act, is to create more housing. And it just seems like it's punishing homeowners who have the space to create an accessory dwelling, to be able to rent it to someone while they're still living there in the principal. So I'm just looking for clarity, I guess, on that Section Eight, or I'm sorry, H.
Would there be anyone who could clarify that? That's willing to do so? I do not, oh, yes, I do. Town Planner.
Page thirty-seven H. So it says that an accessory dwelling unit and the principal dwelling, to which is an accessory, may be rented for periods of at least thirty consecutive days at a time and are prohibited from use as rental units on a weekly or daily basis. And from my understanding, if you don't have an accessory dwelling on your property, you can rent it for however long you may like. And with this language, it seems to me that if I live in my principal, I can't rent the accessory. And if I wanted to, if I left Mashpee and wasn't in my principal, I'd have to rent them together for no less than thirty days. Which to me doesn't seem like it provides more housing. It seems like it punishes people for creating accessory dwellings.
Thank you. You may have a seat. This is Brian Tobin, Mashpee's Town Planner.
Hi, good evening. As Mr. Moderator said, Brian Tobin, Mashpee Town Planner. Sure, no problem. That, that wording is in our prior existing bylaw, so it's just maintaining the status quo in terms of limitations. Again, the attentions of these red lines are to make light adjustments to what is already our accessory apartment bylaw, just to comply with the Affordable Homes Act, with the one minor exception that Mary mentioned regarding the building commissioner's concern for safety provisions, and that specifically addresses a minimum of a four hundred square foot unit. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but that, that Section H is basically the same.
My suggestion would be to let Mr. Milbury make his question so everyone can hear it, or you can reiterate it if you recall.
No, I think she wants to know if she can stay in her residence while she rents out the, the associated dwelling. I don't think the rule was intended to change that option, but I'll take it from Brian to answer that question. You can't use it as an Airbnb.
Sorry, so Mike, she's asking if she can rent out both at the same time or one of the two?
She's asking if she can stay in her primary residence, correct? And then still rent out the, the associated dwelling?
The answer to your question is yes.
Brian, the wording says may be rented. May be rented, not must be rented.
Not must be.
All right, ladies and gentlemen here, let's have-
But that's what she's asking. She's asking if it's permissive, and the answer is yes, she can rent it.
You're, that's the answer you were looking for, right? Yes or no? Maybe it's not a simple answer, but that's the best we have.
It is, but I would ask that this be amended to say an accessory dwelling unit or principal dwelling. They, they shouldn't be tied together.
Standby.
Sorry, but the concern there is, is the thirty day limitation that's, the, the primary intent of that subsection is the thirty day limitation on accessory dwelling units.
May I ask why the accessory dwelling can't be permitted for thirty days? And I just, I guess I'm not understanding the reasoning behind requiring an accessory dwelling in a principal home when people who don't have accessory dwellings can, are free to rent however they like? They're not in Mashpee. I mean, you have to get a rental certificate.
Yeah, I, I will, I will concede. I think we're getting a little off topic because I, I, what I would recommend is to bring your concerns to us, to the planning department, and we can potentially look at making an adjustment that addresses your concerns, but those concerns aren't specific to what we're attempting to do here. I mean, they're, they're just not, you know, so, I mean, I'm hap, I'm happy to address them, but I, but I will say this is that how rentals of a primary dwelling unit work are heavily governed by state law and state statute. So, you know, you have things like the concept of a tenant at will, which is thirty day rentals if you don't have a written leasehold instrument. You have written leasehold instruments and there are statutes governing those. So that's a whole separate issue and a separate topic. But I'm happy to, if you want to come into the department, I'm happy to listen to your concerns and address them, but they just don't have to do with the new Affordable Homes Act and ADUs.
Okay, thank you.
So we just experienced one of the mechanisms the town meeting, the town meeting provides, and that is prior to town meeting, if you have legitimate concerns about the well-publicized content of the warrant and the articles, that's the invitation and your cue to visit with the appropriate department head and ask as many questions you have and maybe negotiate a response if that's appropriate. This particular article is focused solely on making Mashpee's bylaw regarding accessory dwelling and its compliance with the State Act Relative to Affordable Homes that was adopted in the fall of, of last year. Anything beyond that is not the purpose of our being here tonight. So if we want to be in compliance with state law and requirements, you'll vote yes on this ballot. If you don't choose not to, then you'll vote no. Understood?
I have one final question.
Yes, sir.
Timothy Dorsey, Blue Castle Drive. When I applied for my permit under an accessory, whatever, I wanted an apartment over my garage, they granted it to me at the Board of Appeals. Now the assessors office does not have my home as a description, as an accessory dwelling unit or whatever you want to call it. They call it a legal two-family home where I can have two deeded properties on one parcel of land. Now, if this law gets approved, does that get wiped out from me? That's a question I have.
Well, it's a state law.
So you're going to-
Anyone want to speak for the state?
I want to know what you're doing as the town. Is that going to strip my- Is that gonna strip my rights as a legal two-family on Blue Castle Drive?
Does anyone have a short answer to that specific question?
I think the planning, the head of the planning department is here, and the chairwoman is here. Can they answer that question? Because they're the ones that put this question before the town.
I'm trying to help you, Mr. Dorsey. I'm asking if anyone has an answer to that specific question tonight.
The assessor.
If there's no short, simple answer to it tonight, it's not the night to get that answer.
Then we shouldn't vote on it tonight if you cannot answer that question.
Okay. The voters can decide. We happen to have available two experts on the subject in the form of our town council, so we'll give her a crack at it.
Really, what are, what are their credentials?
Mr. Dorsey, she is well-credentialed and is employed as our town council.
I know, I, we, we'll be here all night if you just, if you keep questioning my questions.
Well, we'll be here all night if you, if you don't be quiet and listen to the answer to the question you've asked.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sit down.
I'm sitting here, I'm gonna stand here and listen.
You can listen.
I might have to interject.
Okay, you can stand and be quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Janelle Austin, Town Council. With respect to your inquiry, there is a provision in the proposed zoning ord, zoning by law amendment with respect to pre-existing legal units. That's in the, the meeting package. In addition, anything with respect to the assessment of the property should be referred to the Assessing Department and the Board of Assessors. Thank you. This deals with the zoning of the issue to bring it in compliance with the new state law as part of the Affordable Care, the Affordable Homes Act. Thank you.
So, just real quick, for the record, Brian Tobin, Town Planner, and I just second those comments.
All right. We're ready to vote on this article?
Yes.
Yes.
We're voting on Article 24. Can you go to a microphone, please, and introduce yourself? Or the microphone will come to you.
It appears that the gentleman put a motion on to delay the vote until he had an answer. Shouldn't we be voted on whether we should delay the vote?
I did not hear any such motion.
I thought that's what he did.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion that we hold off on voting on this until you can answer my question.
That's not the proper form if you don't wish anyone to vote on this article tonight. What is your objective?
My objection is you didn't answer my question pertaining to what you're doing, what you're voting on.
There are rules in the back of the blue book. If anyone is able to make a proper motion, so that this act, this article is not acted on tonight...
It's all Chinese to me, sir.
I will entertain it.
If you could tell me what I'm supposed to say, I, I will say it.
That's not my job.
Okay, well, then, then you're not doing a good job.
Thank you. You don't have to vote for me. All right. The motion, the article on the floor is Article Number 24. Oddly, this being a zoning article, does not require a two-thirds vote, because its purpose is to be compliant with state law and nothing else. And you may vote now. Article 25, Ms. Sherman.
Just a second. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related thereto." Select Board recommends approval of Article 25 by a vote four to zero.
And Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 25 by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 25? Of course.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, Richard DeSarg, 65 Shields Road, also a member of the Historical Commission. Uh, Mr. Moderator, the specific details of this proposed bylaw are outlined in the warrant that everybody has, but I think I can make it clear by responding to five questions about this bylaw. The first one is, what exactly is a demolition delay bylaw? A demolition delay bylaw can best be an effective tool in helping to protect historically significant resources here in Mashpee. Generally, in a town where the demolition delay bylaw, a property owner or developer requests a demolition permit from the building commissioner. And he must first then receive approval from the Historical Commission. If the Historical Commission determines the building is preferably preserved, then a pause is imposed. The pause provides a window of opportunity to consider other alternatives to the demolition of an historic building. Nevertheless, after the delay period has expired, the demolition can still proceed. A demolition bylaw cannot indefinitely prevent demolition from occurring. Again, it's a pause that takes place. Question two, why is this necessary for Mashpee? Unlike the surrounding neighboring towns, Mashpee's a Wampanoag community. We do not have many of the early English-style homes from the 16th, 17th, 1800s. There are around 25 or so houses here in Mashpee that are more than 100 years old. Once they are gone, we lose that history of our community. We have a very special and unique history unlike any other in Massachusetts. This bylaw is an attempt to try to slow down the outright elimination of that special history. Question three, who already has a demolition delay bylaw? There are 160 towns in Massachusetts. Here on Cape Cod, we have the towns of Falmouth, Provincetown, Truro, Welfley, Eastham, Chatham, Orleans, Howard, Dennis, Yarmouth, Bonstable, all have the bylaw. Question four, how does it work? First, a developer looking to demolish a house applies for a demolition permit from the building inspector. Second, the Historical Commission then has a public hearing. Third, if after the hearing, the commission determines that the structure is not historically significant, then the demolition goes ahead. If the commission determines the building is historically significant, then that demolition would be detrimental to the town. It would be declared a preferably preserved structure, and an 18-month delay would be applied. The commission would then work with the developer to try to preserve that historic structure. And finally, five, who in Mashpee will be impacted? Why is this important? 99% of all of us here today would not be impacted by this bylaw, as their home is not more than 100 years old. But 100% of everyone here at town meeting would be impacted, because we all live in Mashpee, and the character, the history, and the appearance of this town impacts all of us. Now, if a developer doesn't want to work with us, then he or she can simply wait out the delay and go ahead with the demolition. And if the developer feels we're unreasonable, there's an appeal process, where the issue goes through the Select Board, and after listening to both sides, they could overrule our decision. Most towns have a 25- or 50-year house age limit. Ours is very conservative, with a 100-year-old stipulation. We're bringing this up now, because over the past two years, two historically significant buildings, very important in Mashpee's history, were demolished. Part of the Bourne Jones Bessie Farm dating to the 1700s, and the entire Conant House, also known as the Arlington House, dating to the mid-1800s, were demolished. We had no knowledge that they were demolished until we rode by and saw they were gone. The Arlington House opposite Heritage Park was replaced by a McMansion, another of our few pieces of mastery history now gone. The Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council also voted to support this. For the sake of our town's history, character, we strongly urge you to vote yes on 25. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 25? Seeing none, vote now. This not being a zoning article is not a two-thirds vote. It's a general bylaw. Article 25 passes 198 to 14. A personal sidebar, I've come to appreciate in the years I've known Richard, who you just hear speak eloquently. Brevity is not his strong suit. But, and we've joked about this, but I've never encountered a time when he's opened his mouth that I haven't learned something of importance, usually that pertains to the town. So, I hope you're comfortable with my indulging his lack of brevity to have a better understanding of what matters to all of us in this town, so. So, we bring, that brings us to Article 26. Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto." The Select Board recommends approval of Article 26 by a vote of five to zero.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 26 by a vote of seven to zero.
Does anyone care to speak to this article? Yes, sir.
My name is Glenn Davis, 381 Creighton Road. I'm also co-president of the Friends of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. It's been, actually, this month represents the 30-year anniversary of the Mashpee National Wildlife Refuge. It's also been 30 years since we have not had a visitor center. It's long overdue, and passage of this article sets us on path to finally do something about that and correct it permanently. This article is a win for Mashpee. It is good for the residents, it is good for visitors, it is good for wildlife, it is good for their habitats. It has been supported not only unanimously by the Select Board and the Finance Committee, but also by the Planning Board. Also, we have unanimous support by the Conservation Commission, and it is supported by the partners of the Mashpee Refuge. And those partners include both federal, state, local, private entities, as well as the tribe. And tonight, we are here in front of town meeting, and we hope to see town meeting also support this article. We'd love to see that happen unanimously, so I ask that everyone votes yes on this article. Thank you.
We'll find out shortly. Any other discussion? It's been a long haul, but you got your wish. 175 to 8. Article 26 was approved. Is there anyone here to speak on Article 27?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Uh, the, thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted to make no recommendation on Article 27 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on indefinite postponement.
Hi, uh, I'm, my name is Nicholas Distillio.
Can you kind of tilt the mic up a little bit?
Uh, my name is Nicholas Distillio. I live at 195 Falmouth Road, and I, this might not be about the indefinite postponement.
Well, that, I'm sorry, that's the only motion that's on the floor. So, you can either speak to that or not speak to anything.
Well, yeah, I, I would not want to postpone this. I feel like this is a, that's kind of what we're doing right now, is a public comment, and I feel like it should be something that everyone should be able to do and be advertised to the entire public, so people like us can talk to our government about what we want to see from the people in power.
Is there any other discussion on Article 27?
Score of the survey.
I'll get to that in a moment. Any further discussion on Article 27? You're almost out of order. All right. On Article 27, the motion is for...
Mr. Moderator. Can, can I speak to Mr. Distillio, please?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Distillio, it, in answer to your question, the, the lead petitioner who brought forth this article has to be the one to move it forward. She is not here tonight, and it has been her recommendation that the article be indefinitely postponed. No, that's, I wanted to explain. Yeah, you're welcome.
But thank you for, for, for trying, anyway. So, now you know. All right. So, the motion is on indefinite postponement. This requires a majority vote. If you are in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 27, vote appropriately and vote now. Article 27 is indefinitely postponed by an article, by a vote of 125 to 17. And now I would welcome a motion to adjourn the town meeting. Show move. Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Sorry, I don't have the Celtic score, but you'll find out shortly. Thank you all for doing a nice job tonight, and for coming.